Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We do not meet next week because it's Christmas Eve, so I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. And Carol is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the meeting minutes from December 10th, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $3,616,845.02.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item, there are a number of reports there. First report is the Register of Deed Statement of Revenue Report from November 2019. We have the Auditor's Report. Good morning, Vicki.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office, here to go over some November financials. Starting out with the general fund cash balance, sitting at a healthy $19,163,760 from those property tax revenues that we get this time of year. The Highway Fund cash balance at $10,090,63. And moving on to expenditures for the general fund. Total expenditures, $51,685,088 percent of budget. Personnel expense at $35,498, right at 90 percent of budget. And other expenses, $16,186,723, at 86 percent of budget. And then revenues for the general fund. Total revenue at $55,691,393, 98.1 percent of budget. Year-to-date taxes, $42,296,000, again at 98.1 percent of budget. And other revenues, $13,395,114, also at 98.1 percent of budget. Don't think we can do that again, but... So we're ending the year on a good note. Any questions?
Are there any questions this morning? I really appreciate these reports. I think they've been really helpful, and the graphics make it easy to digest a lot of information pretty quickly. So thank you for the work you guys do on that. Okay, so that takes us to personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, abatements recommended for approval. There are none this week. Next item, item seven, notices and requests. First one is to authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing December 31st to consider supplemental requests to the 2019 budget. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. We are requesting this morning that you authorize posting this notice of hearing for 2019 budget supplements. Attached to your briefing memo is a list of the proposed supplements, all to the general fund totaling $510,000. And again, the budget hearing would be scheduled for December 31st. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any at this time.
Any comments or questions?
I'm assuming we'll just discuss this next meeting.
On the 31st, yeah.
Second.
That was a motion, sorry. I just made a motion.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? And just for my point, I would note that we continue to struggle with the court systems. I mean, we really have very few supplements this year compared to past years, but we continue to struggle with accurately hitting the number for the courts. And I think it would be helpful if somebody from the courts would be able to be available on the 31st so that we could ask some questions. Okay. So a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, excuse me, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Next item, item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Office. Before you is a request for compromise of lien DPNO 28472 in the amount of $6,727.02. The petitioner is a personal representative for her brother's estate. He passed in August 2019. She's in the process of selling his home and has discovered that his former wife's lien is attached to the property. The sale of the home was scheduled for December 4th but was rescheduled by the title company till the end of the month to see how the board decided on this request. I did confirm with the clerk of courts that he was divorced from the lienee on March 23rd, 1992. The lien represents poor relief and legal representation recorded from June 1992 to October 2016 after they were divorced. The property was listed in both of their names, but the lienee transferred her interest in the property by quick claim deed on August 1992. The action requested today is that the petitioner is requesting the commission compromise lien DPNO 28472 with no payment to release the real property legally described as Track 21, Bocoff subdivision of part of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter, and northwest quarter, northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 101 North, Range 50, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. The lien is not the responsibility of the lienee's former husband and will remain in full against the lienee.
Anybody want Melinda to read the property description again? Are there any questions for Melinda this morning? If the applicant is here, if they had a comment?
No.
Okay, applicant's not here? All right.
To approve removing this lien from the property and leaving it against the original person, against the...
The lienee.
The lienee. There we go. The lienee.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Question?
Commissioner Karski?
Trying to follow the timeline, Melinda. So the liens all occurred after...
After they were divorced.
After the divorce.
And they actually began the divorce process in 1991, but she wasn't very cooperative with what she needed to complete at that time, and they finally were able to complete it in 92.
So she had no ownership interests after 92?
No, no. She transferred the lien to him by quick claim.
Okay, and didn't live there. Okay. How did the lien end up on the property if she...
Because when they were married and purchased the property, at that time, you had to add your spouse to the mortgage, so that's how it ended up. So when the title company pulls up a search on the property, they'll see, you know, previous owners', social security numbers, and they'll do a lien search and discover what might not be attached.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This takes us to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here this morning who'd like to speak about something that's not on our agenda, this is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Brown, Program Director of Minnehaha County Detox. Excuse me. As you may be aware, Detox is accredited through the State of South Dakota Division of Behavioral Health. Our current accreditation is set to expire on March 31st of 2020. Therefore, an accreditation review was held last week on Wednesday, December 11th. I'm here to share with you that we received a 98 percent, therefore gaining Detox the highest level of accreditation of another three-year accreditation. So this step is not only important but necessary in continuing the operations of Detox. I'm open for questions. Otherwise, I'd like to thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Just an applause. Good job.
Thank you.
We've come a long ways from Detox in the last seven years, so thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Echo, I'm sorry...
Go ahead, Commissioner Barth.
I would echo Commissioner Hiberger's comments that there were some dark days for us over there, and certainly the old system that we had was pretty primitive compared to where we are today with the other sobering centers, et cetera, that we have. It's great news. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
Piling on, me too. Commissioner Barth, you say it, we've come a long way. I mean, if you haven't been up there, you'd be... I can't imagine we were in a cave before. Our Detox facility is, I've heard it described different ways, but the people there are fantastic, and, you know, thank you. You guys work with people when they're some of the lowest points in their, you know, existence, and thank you for what you do. The bright light at the end of the tunnel for the facility hopefully is our triage, and looking forward. You guys have been great help in getting us as far as we are, so thank you for that, and thank you for what you do. Merry Christmas.
Good to you.
We get 15-yard penalty for piling on, so... Thank you, because I do remember those days a number of years ago, and that was not pleasant. This is awesome, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Congratulations. Is there anyone else here for public comment this morning? If not, we'll go into our regular business. First item is a public hearing and second reading, which was deferred from November 19th, 2019, to consider adoption of the 2018 International Building Code. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Yes, good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So here this morning, you'll see the next three items. It all kind of revolve around this building code. So the first item is the International Building Code. The building code has a three-year code cycle that they update it. The International Code Council updates it with new regulations. The purpose of the building code is to establish minimum standards and regulations for... In this, the IBC is for commercial buildings primarily, then with the next code is the IRC for residential buildings, and then the IEBC is for existing buildings, so they can update with not necessarily changing everything in the existing building. The staff has worked closely with the City of Sioux Falls on any amendments to these ordinances. The City of Sioux Falls review process includes the Sioux Falls Board of Building, Board of Appeals, the Home Builders Association of Sioux Empire, and the South Dakota Multihousing Association. In addition, Minnehaha County has submitted materials to the Home Builders Association, so they've read ours amendments as well. The State's Attorney has reviewed these with kind of minimal comments and changes. So each ordinance is a separate ordinance, so we will have to have a public hearing for each item. Right now is the International Building Code, and that would be ordinance MC 5419. So is there any questions?
Any questions? No, we've had an opportunity to look at these when it was posted before. There aren't any questions for heaven. This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of these building code, adoption of this new building code, it's your opportunity. Anybody who is opposed to this item? I guess there's no need for rebuttal then. If there's nobody who'd like to speak, I'd be open to a motion.
Motion to approve? The IBC?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just point out that this has been kind of in the public venue for some weeks now, and that no one has come forward with any concerns. Obviously, the only person in the room with construction background is the auditor, Bob Litz, and he's not objecting, so it seems like we should pass this.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Kevin, that takes us to our second item.
All right, so the second item just follows off the International Building Code. This item is ordinance MC 5519 for the 2018 International Residential Code, and again, it's a public hearing.
Any questions about the residential code?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 5519. Second.
Well, technically, it's a public hearing, so I just want to just make sure I don't get in trouble with anybody. Was there anybody here who wanted to speak in favor of this? Anybody who wanted to speak opposed? All right, so we had a motion and a second, I believe. Any comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, and then the third ordinance item for the building codes is the 2018 International Existing Building Code, which will be ordinance MC 5619.
All right. Once again, anybody who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak opposed? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 5619. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so this takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize a transfer of $303,662 from the general fund to the emergency management fund. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an annual action that we request. If you'll recall, the emergency management fund receives its only source of revenue from a state grant, and we have received our notice of award for 2019, so at this time, we are requesting that you authorize a transfer for the budgeted amount of $303,662. This is a transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund to fund their 2019 operating expenses.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Takes us to item 14, which is to consider a motion to authorize budget appropriations for personnel services to be used for the Highway Department operational budget. Kim Adamson. Ah, you thought you were getting away.
Way too soon. As you recall, we have a policy within our budget guidelines that requires receiving special authorization from the commission in any occurrence where personnel savings are going to be used for budget overruns in other expenses of a department budget. This year, we have one request. It's from the Highway Department, and it's really the result of an overhead allocation that we do to the highway. Late last year, it was decided that a full-time deputy attorney would be assigned to highway matters, and that has increased this allocation pretty significantly, and therefore, we're asking that some personnel savings from the department be used to offset that additional cost. The amount is $88,000.
Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Any other comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now you get to sit down. Thank you. That takes us to item 15, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2020 agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral Health for the qualified mental health professional services at the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Grabett, Director of JDC. I'm coming before you with our annual contract for QMHP services through Southeastern Behavioral Health. We've had a long partnership with them. They provide great service for our youth, and we'd ask that they continue. The costs were in the memo, and this has been budgeted for in the 2020 budget.
Any questions for Jamie? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 16 is yours as well, to authorize the chair to sign the 2020 agreement between Minnehaha County and Lutheran Social Services for Evening Report Center services. Jamie?
Again, this has been a partnership that's been very beneficial for the youth of our county. The Evening Report Center offers a place for kids to go when home isn't always the best option after school. Those are the highest-risk hours for youth. They learn some cooking skills, some other life skills, homework help. They are provided a ride from school there and a ride home afterwards. It was so beneficial that the United Way funded them to have... This is all pre-adjudication, and the United Way funded to help them do it post-adjudication with kids that are on probation, so we feel it's very beneficial, and we'd ask that you authorize this. It has been planned for as part of the 2020 approved budget.
Motion to approve with a comment.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Hiberger?
So I'm not on Jamie's liaison this year, but in the past, before it was approved by United Way to help fund it, we had kids that went through that post-adjudication stage, and then they would beg the judge to let them stay because they were safe, they were learning things. It was just such a much better situation for those kids, and the county only pays for pre-adjudicated stage, and so it was just this drop-off at the end. And so how great that United Way would come forward and help these kids continue to stay successful after they have been charged or whatever, they're going through the probation period, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Jamie, just to, if I might, ask a question.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a special time of year. What goes on at this time of year for the youth and children that you might have?
In the center itself. We usually add to the meal on Christmas Day. We try to find ways for them to feel special that day. Saint Francis House has been a longtime partner of ours, and they provide handmade quilts for all the kids to get, and they get to keep those, take them home or wherever they're going to next. We buy books and board games and stuff like that, and wrap them up so that they can have a present to open in the morning. Unfortunately, both Thanksgiving and Christmas for the last three years, I've had more than one kid tell me it's the best Thanksgiving or Christmas they've ever had. So we do everything we can to make it a special time for them as well.
If I might, Madam Chair, you know, it can be a special time, it can be a disappointing time, but I know that it's going to be a challenging time for everybody every time, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item 17, to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase six Ford interceptor utility vehicles from Nelson Auto Center in the amount of $201,446.04. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. The action requested this morning in front of you is for our office to use the approved 2020 budgeted funds for the purchase of six Ford interceptor utility vehicles. This is our standard purchase for patrol vehicles. The utility vehicle has been a really good size and fit for the amount of equipment that we have to carry in every one of our patrol vehicles, as well as providing us an all-wheel drive so we can still get to those places that are gravel roads, muddy roads, snow, and whatnot. The authorizing of it now would allow us to place this order. Ford does take some time to manufacture the vehicles, get them here, so we wouldn't actually take possession of the vehicles until, fingers crossed, maybe April or May, which would be well within the 2020 year, so we'd like to place the order now.
Any questions? Commissioner Benega?
I just have a question, Joe. It seems like every year when we do this, that the bids that we use are always out of state, and I know that they're lower, obviously want to do that, but it's crazy that we don't get as good bids in state as we do from the surrounding states.
I agree, and that's something I monitor every year. So this, as you mentioned, this bid here is off the City of Sioux Falls bid, which they look more regionally versus just in state. I always compare their bid prices versus the State of South Dakota bid prices, and when we start getting six vehicles, you know, one vehicle might... Okay, maybe that isn't too big of a deal, but when I apply it times six, it's thousands of dollars cheaper to go with the vendor that Sioux Falls got.
We see the same thing with the Highway Department on a regular basis. It's crazy. Madam Chair, Gerald is absolutely right, and it happens over and over. I'd almost like to call some dealership here in town on the carpet here and say, "What's going on that you can't beat those Minnesota people?"
Any other comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 18, is to authorize the chair to sign the 2020 Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Council of Governments. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is the first of several annual contract renewals that you will see here today. As the chair mentioned, this agreement is with CCOG. This Metropolitan Planning Organization really functions as a pass-through for the county to receive some federal funding. That is what this commits the county to, as well as just so the public can better understand what this MPO does as well. Other local governments, including the City of Sioux Falls and Lincoln County, also participate, other surrounding municipalities, and it is a joint planning exercise to make sure that as the area further develops, that there is coordination between everyone regarding different infrastructure improvements. Would request that you would approve this agreement, please, for 2020. The dollar amount that it commits in federal funds is $70,477.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. I would just comment, you know, I think one of the mystifying things to me when I came on the commission was this whole MPO and CCOG and what all those initials happen to mean, but it is a tremendously important opportunity for Minnehaha County to be involved in joint planning with all the surrounding governmental entities, and a lot of, you know, most of the significant road projects are birthed in this organization, so I think it's something that we get a great benefit from. So I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is yours as well, Craig, to authorize the chair to sign the 2020 agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral for Mobile Crisis Team Services.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is another annual contract renewal for the 2020 Mobile Crisis Team, and this is a service that the county contracts with Southeastern Behavioral Health to provide intervention for individuals who may have a wellness check called in by a loved one for someone else, or they may just be in a personal crisis and law enforcement comes to visit.
The Mobile Crisis Team would provide on-the-scene counseling services to really help mitigate some of those crisis scenario impacts. And in many cases, the individual, instead of needing to be placed on some type of mental health hold or involuntary commitment, is then able to stay in their home, which is better for that individual and better for taxpayers as well. This has been a successful agreement over the years. And as you can see, the fees are staying the same as previous years. There's a flat administrative fee that is broken down into 12 monthly payments. And then there are different on-call rates, depending on the time that the professional would be engaged. And then certainly, coverage for expenses as well. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? I would just comment, I think this is something we get reports from them on a monthly basis of the type of services they provide and the tremendous approval ratings they get from local law enforcement. This is, I think, been one of those home runs for the county where we have an opportunity to intercede with folks that are in trouble. And most of the time, these folks are able to allow those people to stay in their homes. And so I think I'm just a big fan. I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to authorize the Chair to sign the 2020 Contract between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Craig?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is the last of three annual contracts that I will be presenting today. This is for animal control with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. They have also been a longtime vendor of the county. If you see a stray animal or just issues with animals outside of city limits, out in the county, the Humane Society is the organization that provides those animal control services. And that budget, again, remains the same as 2019, given where reimbursement was at for different expenses. It's not necessary to increase the rates that the county is paying. But this is a 24-hour-a-day service that's being provided seven days a week. Certainly, in the off-hours or on-holidays, the rate is a little bit higher. But again, the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society is providing a really valuable service for county residents.
Questions, comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. I'm going to let Olivia figure out who those people were. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to Item 21, which is to consider resolutions to approve two property tax payment proposals for records 13241 and 88478. Carol? Good morning. Property tax payments?
21.
Good morning. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Give me just a second to find. Here's the memo. The item that I'm presenting today here would be the approval of a property tax payment resolution for records RDIDs 13241 and 88478. Attached are two resolutions creating payment plans for back taxes, interest and penalties for two separate property owners as follows. Number one, property record 13241 for the amount of $39,732.30. And the second one is a property record 88478 for the amount of $18,980.89. I've been working with each of these owners to create the property, the payment plan. Neither, this one's a little bit different than the ones we normally do because we've not taken the properties yet. I told you earlier that we were going to probably have another property tax deed sale this year. So I'm going in and cleaning up, and I discovered one of them came to me, the smaller amount, came to me and was very concerned because they built their house in 2015. And they thought that the bank was going to be doing the escrow thing, but that never happened for them. So they were quite surprised to see they had this amount of money. The other larger amount, that person has been in bankruptcy since 2010. It came out in 2017, and I contacted him. And he was very relieved to find out that there was a path forward. You know, this is a little bit different because we've not taken the titles yet, which actually puts the onus on the Treasurer's Office if they wanted to do this or not. My office, we're already doing 11 of them. And by and large, they've been successful, a couple of tardies. But we've called them, contacted them, and then had some, had good success so far. The Treasurer's Office, I went and talked. Pam, of course, is out. She's had surgery on her arm again. I've not contacted her. I thought at this stage of her surgery, she'd probably be left alone. So I did contact two of the deputies that are closest to me in these type of things. And they both said, yeah, it'd really be a good deal. And if Pam comes back and has any questions, I'm confident that, number one, if she wants it, they can take over. Or I'm confident that they'll just let the Auditor's Office do this. You know, it provides a path forward for these folks and puts them on a schedule. They were both felt a little bit overwhelmed, and I thought that, you know, we could have waited till next year and taken it. The arrears would have been higher and all that stuff. What I'm asking you today is allow me to do this and help these taxpayers out.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that, I thank you for helping these people work through it. Nobody wants to take their house away. Nobody wants to sell it. And really, all you need to do is collect the tax dollars and the back penalties and stuff. And we're better off as a county doing that than taking somebody's property and ending up with a whole lot more messes.
Yes. And this way here, you know, being we're ahead of the game on taking them, it would save the county the expense of myself, Maggie and Hayden having to do all the work we do for a taking or, you know, for doing the tax deed.
Commissioner Karski?
I apologize to Maggie because I think she's probably going to be the one to answer this question. I understand if you need to research it. But by setting up payment plans and people are so far in arrears, are we foregoing any rights to the property because we do this? Kind of like an NSF check, if you take another check for an NSF check? Do you give up rights to collect on the other check? Or are we foregoing anything statutorily because we're making these arrangements with these people? And again, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, Maggie, but it came to mind. And if you need to research it and look into that, I'd appreciate it.
That would be my preference, Madam Chair. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
Bob, thank you for bringing this. The larger amount, is that commercial property?
No, it, well, with the initial bankruptcy, there was a plot of ground. He was selling those properties off, and people were building on them when the Great Recession hit and caused problems with those people making the payments to him. The bank wanted to just close him out, but he wouldn't do that. He felt that going bankrupt, or doing that type of a walkaway wouldn't be the right thing. And so he has worked through all these things, paid all those parcels off that he had sold to people that he had to resell. And now the property tax is the last piece for this man to get his life back together.
I'd make a motion to approve this payment plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other further comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. That takes us to Item 22, which is to authorize the Chair to sign an amendment to the USD School of Medicine's Family Medicine Contract for Community Engagement. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. For several years now, Minnehaha County has been working in the area of youth and diversity, cultural awareness through a variety of different ways. Lastly, through some contracts that we've had with an outside organization. The MacArthur Foundation has allowed us, underneath this grant that we have from them, to really lift a lot of our services and our programs and our education opportunities up. So today, we are requesting that you authorize the chairperson to sign an amendment to the USD School of Medicine Family Medicine Contract for Community Engagement. We currently have a significant contract with USD, who has several staff who are engaged in working on aspects of the MacArthur Foundation. And this would take the MacArthur dollars, along with dollars that have been previously spent, combine those together, and we would put that into that contract for some exciting things.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
I would just say this has been a really good program in the past. We had a full-time and then eventually a part-time person through Lutheran Social Services working on alternatives for juveniles. Those can be reimbursed by the state of South Dakota for successful diversion. So there's actually continues, Pennington County has been more successful in retrieving dollars from the state than we have. And so hopefully, going forward, we'll retrieve more to offset some of these costs. Am I on the wrong, am I on the wrong spot, Erin? She's telling me I'm on the wrong spot. I will still say this has been a very successful program, and I apologize for my misinformation.
Anything else? Any other comments or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to Item 23, which are liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just had one because this last week I was at the SDACC, South Dakota Board of Association of County Commissions, Board of Directors meeting. And so just a couple of quick things. One, there is no spring conference in March, so you can take that vacation off your calendar. They decided last year to only do the spring conference every other year during, after there was an election so that they could educate new commissioners coming in. And so this is the off-year. So there will not be, or this next year is, so there will not be a conference in the spring. There will be just a Board of Directors meeting to clean up after the legislative session. At our meeting, we did discuss the Bed, Board and Booze Bill and the Cottington Bill for building jails and courthouses and administrative building. There's two different bills that the Association will be supporting in the legislative session, so we discussed both of those. We also talked, we had a speaker come in that talked about the AG pilot program, the AG evaluation private program, and then gave us copies of those, the two bills that are in draft form at this point, that are, they intend to have dropped early in the session. So there's a lot of time to review those bills. I did give you a copy of those two draft bills. There was a short presentation given on the pilot study, which I couldn't even begin to explain to you. I will say that the slides that he showed us, my takeaway was that no matter what you do, you still have to, you have to, you have to collect taxes in the state of South Dakota. And so some of the different ways that they were looking at is just going to shift the property tax burden from one county to another. And so I'm not even going to try to explain it, but that, that study is out there. If you want to search for it, or I do have some slides in my folder that you could look at if you're really interested. We also met with the Municipal League and Elected Officials Association after our meeting. And we just, we had a speaker that came in, and we worked through, talking about how we could work together with those two organizations, moving legislation forward.
All right, thank you. Any other, Commissioner Benega?
We met last week as a metro management group to move ahead with the potential funding of a new metro management building next to the training facility that the city has discussed for many, many months. We're looking at hiring an architect and a site planner, if you will, and providing some estimates. The city has agreed to pay for those fees at this point. So there's no investment at this point from the county. I'm not sure what the timeframe will be, but the property has been accessed from a purchase standpoint, and they're going to hopefully build a training facility that needs to be replaced. The current one is out by the airport and is literally unsafe to use. So the Fire Department, the Police Department, our Sheriff's Department, EMS, would all be able to use the training facility. And we'll see where it goes, but that's the next step in the process.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Liaison reports? All right, Item 24, new business. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Barth?
Being as we won't be meeting next week, I would just say that I did meet with a jolly old elf the other day. And he pointed out that it is better to give than to receive. And for all of us out there, we should think of the children, think of our friends that are ill, think of people that are, have other problems, and don't worry about ourselves as much as we like to do. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Old business? Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess. Motion to enter, to recess. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone. I think we'll try to, we'll recess for about 10 minutes and start about 5 to 10.